Ilja Sator and Guam is back in session. We're back from recess. When we left off, we were on Bill number 211-37COR. And Senator Perez, you had the floor. You are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to, thank you for the recess, and I wish to proffer an amendment. It's on line 21 to 24, page 3, to amend Section 32213. For subsection 4 of the bill to read, GDOE must award a high school diploma to a student who otherwise qualifies for a diploma but is unable to meet the requirements of this section if the parent or legal guardian or student, if the student is at least 18 years of age, certifies through an affidavit signed under penalty of perjury that he or she refuses to complete the FAFSA form. And so this language is proffered in order to clarify that this bill does not automatically require that a high school diploma be given to a student who does not otherwise qualify, for instance, if they don't have the credits. I think that's important to clarify. The other thing that this amendment does, so the affidavit, so originally, the original language says that it was certified through an affidavit, which would require notarization. And so what this language, signed under penalty of perjury, would do is, basically, it would make it more convenient for the parent to sign without having to pay for notary services. And so it just eases the process. So I ask for my colleague's support.
On the amendment, Senator Shelton, on the amendment?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment to help clarify the language of this section so that we are ensuring that our students are meeting all other requirements for graduation and they're not able to use this language to otherwise get a diploma if they have not met their requirements. And to also make the process a little less stringent for them to submit the information needed if they would like to opt out of this requirement. So thank you very much to the mover of this amendment.
Thank you, Legislative Secretary Shelton. On the amendments, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? If not, then sponsor may close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So there's actually a language change proffered by legal, actually recommended by legal. So instead of affidavit, I would like to amend this amendment to say declaration. And this is under legal's advice.
On that amendment, is there any objection to proceeding without it being in writing? If not, on the amendment to change the word from affidavit to declaration, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that amendment carries. And on the bigger amendment, Senator Perez, would you like to close?
Yeah, so basically, the idea is that we want to give the option. Of course, we want students to, you know, think forward in attending college and in order to make it affordable, to allow them to see, you know, take that next step to achieving higher education, which can eventually open many doors for, you know, many opportunity, career opportunities. So I'm in support of this amendment and, but also because it's important to allow for parents who, and those that are 18 years of older, who are not, don't want to fill out a form, that they're not going to be prevented from graduating. So I think this is important amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. So on the amendment as amended, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, this amendment passes. We're still on Bill number 211. Senator Perez, did you, you still have the floor on 211? All right. So is there anyone else who would like to speak on the bill, on Bill 211? Senator Burnett, on the bill, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, Guam. I rise in support of the bill. I know on the public hearing, there had been some privacy concerns raised and feel like the bill out of committee deals with those. And then it also creates, I don't know if escape clause is the right word, but several escape clauses and the exemptions that we allowed, which include a high school, well, the previous speaker just amended that section, but parent legal, parent or legal guardian or student, if the student's at least 18 years of age certifies a waiver in writing to their principal if he or she refuses to complete such an application. There's also another exemption in the event a school counselor authorizes the student a decline to complete and submit the FAFSA application for compelling causes determined by the school counselor. And so, of course, any effort that we can undertake to increase the odds of our high school graduates continuing their education and moving on to college, I completely support because, as it was said in the public hearing, apparently there are large pools of money that our graduates aren't even able to touch because they haven't filled out this application. They haven't had the determination made about whether or not they qualify for financial aid. And let me tell you, the vast, vast majority of our public school graduates, I mean, I'm pretty sure it's in the 90%, but would qualify for this aid. So it's a great bill, and I would like to be included as a cosponsor, if I'm not already. Thank you. But I also wanted to kind of address some bigger issues, right, with just academics in general and Guam Department of Education. So while we celebrate this effort, again, to really steer our kids in the right direction and let them know, like, hey, yeah, going to college, for many people, including a lot of people in my family when I was growing up, we didn't even think about it because we just assumed that it was beyond our reach financially. And so to be able to have these kids understand that not only are they good enough to go to college, but that there are many pathways available for them to be able to afford to do so, I totally support it. But for me, there are also other issues going on in the Guam Department of Education, and we hear about those, not necessarily from GDOE, but from many agencies under our watch. You know, I can't recall how many times I've had the chief of police in the public hearing room across the hall talking about graduates of our public school system who cannot pass the equivalency exam so that they can try and become police officers. And, you know, we hear it from the Guam Police Department, I hear it from the Department of Corrections. This is something we hear, you know, routinely, and it is alarming to me that we have people who are graduating from our public school system who cannot pass a high school equivalency exam. And I believe the biggest contributor to that is the social promotion. And this is something that we've been doing for many years, and I think the social promotion combined with the learning loss of the pandemic has brought us to this state where we're at now. And unfortunately, the place where we're at now is we have a lot of students who are graduating from high school who have no business graduating because they simply haven't been able to satisfactorily grasp all of the academic requirements. And they're not doing that because we're just socially promoting kids year after year. And so this is something that the Committee on Education is going to take a closer look at, and I think that it's a big issue that, you know, we as a body definitely have to roll up our sleeves and get way deep into the weeds on because just something as simple as that social promotion combined, again, with learning loss, that isn't just occurring in the pandemic, I don't need to remind any of my colleagues here in the body that, you know, to this day, what is it, the end of April, we still have public school students who are going to school in double sessions, who are waking up at 4:00 in the morning to catch the bus at 5:00 a.m., students who are going to school at noon and coming home when it's dark, right? And so when you take those things and you combine them, you know, the social promotion, the learning laws, and then these hurdles and these obstacles that we as a government are placing in front of our kids, I mean, it's no wonder they're struggling and facing the challenges that they are. And so I rise in support of the bill, and I just, I just wanted to put that little pin on that for the rest of the colleagues to understand that this is an issue that I think that, you know, we're going to be having hearings on and talking with a lot of the curriculum and academics folks at GDOE and seeing if there are ways that we can address this legislatively. So, yeah, I rise in support of this bill because I think it's a great step in the right direction, and I also believe there are many other steps that we can take to move this way. Seju Smasi, Madam Speaker.
Seju Smasi, Senator Burnett, on the bill. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Canetta, on the bill.
I certainly, thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of this legislation. I know that there are some reservations with a lot of our constituents out there. I understand that the economic hardships a lot of families face. I come from humble beginnings. My parents are both, you know, were both government employees. My dad was a retiree. So I certainly understand that the hardships a lot of our younger generation faces, and especially the public school administration, public school side, right? I know that some of our legislators here come from the best schooling facility on the island, public school system. Not necessarily that we didn't want to go to school, it's, sometimes it's just our families are not able to avail for those programs because we make like a penny, penny more, and sometimes even a dollar more, and then we just don't get any programs at all. So we become the children of the gap, meaning we don't get any programs available to us because our parents make $1 over or a penny over. And then all the programs that were, that could have been avowed to us are just lost. So I rise in support of this legislation, and I'm hopeful that the next generation has more opportunities than ourselves, and it resolves a lot of the situations at the home front for the costly expenses of the educational, educational requirements. And I'm hopeful that the education, the Department of Education takes this on as a holistic approach, even in the private school, maybe some students are not, what do you call it, come from wealthy families, but they certainly got grand opportunities to attend the school. And I also think in the charter schools that we make sure that all the students have equal access to this program and that all the children are also guided throughout this application process, because I know it is a very lengthy process. I know that certain parents are also understanding of their tax regiments or the, you know, filing their taxes. So I'm hopeful that, again, that we help guide these students to furthering their education and prospering better than us as leaders. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Blas, you recognize on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, well, I do recognize and appreciate the intent of the bill, and I would really would like to rise in support of it. I'm a little troubled, and I'm sure that we had just finished an amendment to a portion to the area that I'm troubled with, you know, again, it's found on page 3, line 21. Let me just read that whole section just to, so that, starting on lines 21, number 4. GDOE must award a high school diploma to a student who is unable to meet the requirements of this section if the parent or legal guardian or student is of at least 18 years of age and, signed under penalty of perjury, certifies through an affidavit that he or she refuses to complete the FAFSA form. I'm just wondering what that, what purpose does that serve? The only requirement necessary to complete a form, if you want to complete a form, is that you're going to graduate from the high school. If you're not able to graduate from the high school, why are you going to file a signed So it's, and then you're going to penalize parents, or the student for that matter. For what? I don't see how this brings any value to the intent of the bill. Yes, I understand, you know, the desire that we make sure that all of our students take advantage of programs that could be available to them. But first off, you must award a high school diploma to a student who is unable to meet the requirements of this section. What are the requirements of this section? I'm going to pose this, I'm going to, I'm going to ask if the author can yield to the, to the question.
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. To answer that question, that concern, we did address this through the amendment just passed by the previous speaker, or two speakers previous, and that is to add the language, or I'll read out the whole section of the amendment that passed. GDOE must award a high school diploma to a student who otherwise qualifies for a diploma but is unable to meet the requirements of this section if the parent or legal guardian or student, if the student is at least 18 years of age, certifies through an affidavit signed under penalty of perjury that he or she refuses to complete the FAFSA form.
Affidavit's changed to declaration.
Thank you very much, declaration. So this is to ensure that a student isn't going to get a diploma through this language, find some loophole, but it would be for only students who otherwise meet all other qualifications.
I still understand what is, meet the requirements of this section. Meet the requirements of graduation and meet the requirements of the section, what the way the language is written here. That's the concern that I have here. Okay? Because when you say we meet the requirements of the section, you read the section here, what requirements are you talking about? You've already got the requirement, then, first off, you've got, you've got to be able to graduate, be able to graduate in one form or form or another. And then we're going to penalty of perjury on a declaration?
I yield to the question. Madam Speaker, I may.
Are you asking the sponsor to yield, Senator?
Yes, please.
Would the sponsor yield?
Thank you. The requirements of this section refers to number 1 and 2 of Section 2, which creates the new section, Section 3223, Free Application for Federal Student Aid. So the first requirement is that, beginning in school year 2025, 2026, that the FAFSA form be filled out, and number 2, that a copy of this, of a copy of the FAFSA receipt that a student has completed with their parents be submitted to DOE. So those are the two requirements of this section.
So we're going to penalize people for choosing their own free will? That's what we're doing. We're going to penalize people for choosing their own free will.
Madam Speaker, I can answer to that again.
Are you asking the sponsor to yield, Senator?
I'm not, no, I'm not going to ask the sponsor to yield, of course, but I'm looking at this again. It's not my intent. I don't, I appreciate and I like the purpose of the bill. The concern here that I have is the way, even just the amendment, the way it's, the amendment is worded. Okay? Who otherwise qualifies for it, but is unable to meet the requirements of this section? Unable to meet, the only thing that's unable to meet is that they, they don't want to sign or submit a FAFSA form. Really? Does everybody, is everybody at age 18 required to have a driver's license? Does everybody who's got a bachelor's degree required to put a copy of their, of their degree in their back pocket to prove their point? I understand and I appreciate, again, and we want to be able to encourage them. But when we're going to penalize individuals for choosing not to, what happens if they decide that later on down the road that they want to look at the application process? They're not eligible for it then? Well, what we've done now is we've blemished their record with mix, which could put a mark, a concern as to whether or not they can, they can apply. Again, I need to reiterate, I'm not against the bill, I'm not against the intent of it. But what I don't like is that we're going to force this. I remember there was a discussion somewhat similar to this in a previous bill. That's what I caution. And really, I don't see the necessity for that whole section itself. This bill can be perfectly fine if that section wasn't there, or that, if that, if that, yeah, that subsection wasn't there. It does nothing to help the bill. So for the sake of my concern, Madam Speaker, I'm going to go ahead and propose amendment that we strike lines 21 through 24 on page 3. We delete it.
There's a motion, notwithstanding the rules, to make an amendment that's not in writing. Is there any objection to this amendment?
Hang on, Madam Speaker, I was, notwithstanding the rules, we're back at the main motion. I know that, so I can speak on the main motion, this is part of the main motion. So it's notwithstanding, it doesn't have to be notwithstanding. Oh, well, notwithstanding without paper, that's fine, okay.
Is there any objection to this amendment being not written and not passed out? Seeing no objection, we'll proceed. So the amendment is to delete subsection 4, lines 21 through 24 on page 3 of the bill. On that amendment, is there anyone who'd like to speak? If not, Senator Perez, on the amendment?
Okay, I guess I have a question if we do that. So if we read Section 1 of the bill, it states that, as a prerequisite to receiving a high school diploma from the Guam Department of Education, the parent or legal guardian of each student or student, if the student is at least 18 years of age, must complete a free application for federal student aid form, or, sorry, aid. And so by taking out Section 4, we're really removing the opportunity for a parent to opt out. And I think it's important to have that option. So otherwise, by eliminating subsection 4, we're requiring, no matter what, that each parent must fill out a form, and I think it's important to keep that opt-out capability. So maybe if I can have a moment's recess, or, yeah, that's, I guess that's my statement, if that's the repercussions of taking that out. And I think it's important to keep an opt-out option. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the amendment, Senator Shelton, on the amendment you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I echo the same sentiments as the previous speaker. I think this language is necessary in the bill so that parents, in fact, and students who are 18 years of age or older, have the opportunity to opt out of this requirement and still receive their diploma. So parents may not need federal financial aid for their students, they may make enough money and, you know, never need to fill out a financial aid application, they may not want to go after free grants or have to take out a loan for their student. We're so happy for them that they would be able to do that. And so if for any reason they'd want to opt out, if it's that, or privacy, or just not wanting to fill out another form, they can opt out through a declaration and, and not submit this requirement to the school, not need to fill out the FAFSA form, not need to give a receipt to the school, and still have their child graduate, still receive a diploma. So I think there may be a little confusion about what this section does. There is no punishment of a parent or punishment of a student for not filling it out. This is, in fact, giving the opportunity to them to opt out.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment?
Madam Speaker?
If not, the sponsor may close.
Based on the discussion, I am willing to go ahead and withdraw that amendment, withdraw that amendment, but then offer a better amendment, I mean, another amendment, actually to clarify the language.
Okay. Is there any objection to withdrawing the amendment, seeing none amendments withdrawn? Senator Blas?
Senator, thank you, ma'am. So instead of otherwise qualifies for it, but is unable to meet the requirement, it should be, but would rather opt out of this requirement. Because unable to meet this requirement and opting out of this is two different things. Now they're unable to meet the requirements. Now, unable doesn't mean that they don't want to. Unable means that they can't. And so they choose not to, so my, is, is, but would opt, but would rather opt out of this requirement, out of the requirement of this section. Want to put it in writing?
All right, let's see. So the amendment is to strike the words "is unable to meet" on line 22, instead of "but is unable to meet the requirements," and to replace that with "but would rather opt out of the requirements." Is there any objection to having this amendment not in writing? If not, then we'll proceed without it in writing. All right, so we're going to proceed without it in writing. Again, the amendment is to strike the words "is unable to meet," and it will now read, GDOE must award a high school diploma to a student who otherwise qualifies for a diploma but would rather opt out of the requirements of this section.
Yes.
On that amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak? Senator Perez?
Just clarifications. Are we striking out everything after a section?
No, we're striking out the words "is unable to meet" on line 22. "Is unable to meet," and replacing it with "would rather opt out of." So it reads, "but is unable, but would rather opt out of the requirements of this section."
And then it continues, if the parent or legal guardian?
Yes.
Or the student? Okay, thank you.
All right, on this amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? Senator Perez, you still have the floor.
Yeah, just a quick question. So it seems like the other part after section is duplicative. So, you know, GDOE must award a high school diploma, provided that, I think, I forget what the other language is, provided, who otherwise qualifies for a diploma, but who would rather, who prefers to opt out of this section? would rather, who prefers to opt out of this section. So I'm wondering if the other parts of this may be duplicative, especially the part where it says they certify through a declaration under penalty or perjury that he or she refuses to complete the FAFSA form. So I'm just wondering if those need to also be addressed, considering the opt-out language might be sufficient? Perhaps a question for legal?
Are you posing a question to the sponsor of the amendment?
Sponsor, and then maybe confer with legal as well.
If you'd like to confer with legal, please do so. If the sponsor would yield to that question?
I understand, and I understand what her concerns are, and if she can work with legal on the language, I can say that he or she opts out to completing, opts out of completing. But let, ma'am, if you can, for her, the opportunity to speak to legal for that.
All right, we'll take a one-minute recess. We're back from recess. When we went to recess, Senator Blas, you were discussing an amendment. I guess you can close on your amendment?
In the spirit of cooperativeness, and I think being able to, and I appreciate my colleague for being able to work with legal counsel on this, the amendment is, I'm sure it was passed out already, and it has the strike signs, and instead of meeting, not able to meet a requirement, it's rather opt out of the requirements. And it's also addressed in the concern that you had in the last part of the paragraph. Thank you.
So do you want to proffer this amendment instead?
Yes, please.
All right, so a motion to withdraw the previous amendment. Is there any objection to withdrawal of the previous amendment? Seeing no objection, that amendment is withdrawn. And the amendment being proffered is the one now in front of you. So on this amendment, is there anyone who'd like to speak? If not, the sponsor may close on the amendment.
No need.
All right. Is there any objection to this amendment? Seeing no objection, amendment passes. All right, we're still on the bill. 211-37COR, anyone else would like to speak on the bill? If not, then sponsor may close on the bill. Senator Shelton, Legislative Secretary.
Sidois Massey, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to thank all of our colleagues for the discussion on the bill today, the amendments made to strengthen this measure, and I ask for their support so that we are able to better support our graduating seniors, find pathways to careers, whether that be through higher education or other means. Sidois Massey.
Sidois Massey. On the motion to place Bill 211-37COR onto the third reading as amended by the committee and further amended on the floor, is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, that motion passes. Renowned Bill number 244-37COR, Legislative Secretary.
Legislative Secretary.
We are on Bill number two four four dash thirty-seven as amended by the Committee We are on Bill number two four four dash thirty-seven as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement and Statistics Research and Planning. on Environment Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement and Statistics Research and Planning. Speaker Terlachy, you are recognized. Speaker Terlachy, you are recognized.
Sidois Masi. Sidois Masi. So this is, I would like to make a motion to place Bill number two four four dash thirty-seven So this is, I would like to make a motion to place Bill number two four four dash thirty-seven COR as amended by the Committee on Environment Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement and COR as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement and Statistics Research and Planning to the third reading. Statistics Research and Planning to the third reading. This bill is sponsored by myself, Therese M. Terlachy, Sabina Flores Perez, and Chris This bill is sponsored by myself, Therese M. Terlachy, Sabina Flores Perez, and Chris Barnett, and it is an act to add a new section five seven one oh nine to chapter fifty-seven Barnett, and it is an act to add a new section five seven one oh nine to chapter fifty-seven of Title X Guam Code annotated relative to providing a Guam identification card and of Title X Guam Code annotated relative to providing a Guam identification card and Guam real ID fee waiver for juniors and seniors in high school, foster children, and upon Guam real ID fee waiver for juniors and seniors in high school, foster children, and upon order by the court. order by the court. I'd like to speak further on this. I'd like to speak further on this. Please proceed. Please proceed. Sidois Masi. Sidois Masi. All right, so the intent of the bill is really to enhance services to certain groups All right, so the intent of the bill is really to enhance services to certain groups of of our youth, those who are in need, by waiving fees associated with obtaining a Guam identification our youth, those who are in need, by waiving fees associated with obtaining a Guam identification card or Guam real ID. card or Guam real ID. The ID is a gateway to host of critical services and opportunities for young people, including The ID is a gateway to host of critical services and opportunities for young people, including employment, health care, banking, and educational opportunities. employment, healthcare, banking, and educational opportunities. And by ensuring easy access to IDs, we empower our youth to participate fully in society And by ensuring easy access to IDs, we empower our youth to participate fully in society after graduation and upon turning eighteen. after graduation and upon turning eighteen. So minors who enter adulthood, particularly those without support systems or those at So minors who enter adulthood, particularly those without support systems or those at high risk, often face challenges in obtaining valid identifications after they are eighteen. high risk, often face challenges in obtaining valid identifications after they are eighteen. And the fee waiver provision in this bill is crucial for those who are financially challenged, And the fee waiver provision in this bill is crucial for those who are financially challenged, and it ensures that no one is disenfranchised from obtaining an ID just because of inability and it ensures that no one is disenfranchised from obtaining an ID just because of inability to pay. to pay. This also will incentivize students to get their IDs sooner rather than later, hopefully, This also will incentivize students to get their IDs sooner rather than later, hopefully, because of the free, the fee waiver. because of the free, the fee waiver. And a side effect would hopefully, this is an idea we got from Superintendent Swanson And a side effect would hopefully, this is an idea we got from Superintendent Swanson at the hearing, is that if we incentivize seventeen-year-olds to remain in school and at the hearing, is that if we incentivize seventeen-year-olds to remain in school and get a free ID because they are enrolled in school, this might help to keep them in school get a free ID because they are enrolled in school, this might help to keep them in school beyond the age of sixteen. beyond the age of sixteen. That was one of his suggestions. That was one of his suggestions. So the bill as amended now includes juniors and seniors as opposed to only seniors. So the bill as amended now includes juniors and seniors as opposed to only seniors. So this bill requires that the fee is waived for an ID for those people, and it says exactly So this bill requires that the fee is waived for an ID for those people, and it says exactly who do not possess a valid driver's license or United States passport that does not expire who do not possess a valid driver's license or United States passport that does not expire on or before their eighteenth birthday, and is enrolled as a junior or senior in high on or before their eighteenth birthday, and is enrolled as a junior or senior in high school, or is a foster or a child under the custody of CPS, or is a juvenile required school, or is a foster or a child under the custody of CPS, or is a juvenile required to obtain an ID card upon order by the Superior Court of Guam. to obtain an ID card upon order by the Superior Court of Guam. The bill also requires that DOE and the Department of Revenue and Taxation will work together The bill also requires that DOE and the Department of Revenue and Taxation will work together to implement a system that's convenient to these high school seniors and juniors and to implement a system that's convenient to these high school seniors and juniors and their parents. their parents. And the goal is to minimize parents having to take off work to get the IDs for the kids. And the goal is to minimize parents having to take off work to get the IDs for the kids. And so it was DRT's idea, and they're very willing to do this. And so it was DRT's idea, and they're very willing to do this. It was their suggestion of how to get it done. It was their suggestion of how to get it done. And because they have to use a real ID computers that are at their offices and can't move And because they have to use a real ID computers that are at their offices and can't move those to the schools, they would open up on Saturdays for different schools to come those to the schools, they would open up on Saturdays for different schools to come in, school by school or group by group, and the parents not have to take off work, hopefully, in, school by school or group by group, and the parents not have to take off work, hopefully, and a very convenient way of getting all that group of students to get their IDs. and a very convenient way of getting all that group of students to get their IDs. The bill will also require that the village mayors can submit their residency verification The bill will also require that the village mayors can submit their residency verification forms by email, and that DRT would accept those. forms by email, and that DRT would accept those. So it was kind of off and on sometimes as to what would be accepted and what would be So it was kind of off and on sometimes as to what would be accepted and what would be sent. sent. And this is supposed to be for the convenience of the parents, so they don't have to wait, And this is supposed to be for the convenience of the parents, so they don't have to wait, that things could be sent promptly, that village mayors, you know, there would be no that things could be sent promptly, that village mayors, you know, there would be no delay, and it would be very convenient for them to just send it by email. delay, and it would be very convenient for them to just send it by email. And DRT is very willing to accept these by email, and so they've got a system ready And DRT is very willing to accept these by email, and so they've got a system ready to do this. to do this. And I think this is also something that Public Health also supports, because Public Health And I think this is also something that public health also supports, because public health needs that information as well to provide services, they need that verification of needs that information as well to provide services, they need that verification of residency. residency. All right, so that's section D of the bill. All right, so that's section D of the bill. And again, we have done this, the legislature has done similar waiving of the fees for IDs And again, we have done this, the legislature has done similar waiving of the fees for IDs for other classes of people in Guam, including homeless individuals and homeless youth. for other classes of people in Guam, including homeless individuals and homeless youth. And this program, I think, has worked out very well. And this program, I think, has worked out very well. It's, of course, for the same goal, it's to make sure that those people can get the It's, of course, for the same goal, it's to make sure that those people can get the services that are available to them, they can avail of those if they have these identification services that are available to them, they can avail of those if they have these identification cards. cards. And the testimony was all in favor of the bill, and so I ask my colleagues to please And the testimony was all in favor of the bill, and so I ask my colleagues to please support this bill. support this bill. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you, Speaker. On the bill, Bill number two four four dash thirty-seven, Senator Fisher, you are recognized. On the bill, Bill number two four four dash thirty-seven, Senator Fisher, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think this is a good bill. I think this is a good bill. Anything that can reduce a barrier to entry for a young person trying to get into the Anything that can reduce a barrier to entry for a young person trying to get into the workforce or move on through life is a good thing. workforce or move on through life is a good thing. I have, I'm walking through this new section two, fifty-seven one oh nine. I have, I'm walking through this new section two, fifty-seven one oh nine. And section A, this will explain to us who is eligible and who is not eligible to get And section A, this will explain to us who is eligible and who is not eligible to get the free ID. the free ID. And I hope the Speaker will correct me if I'm wrong on this. And I hope the Speaker will correct me if I'm wrong on this. The fees shall be waived for any Guam resident who does not already possess a valid driver's The fees shall be waived for any Guam resident who does not already possess a valid driver's license, passport, okay, that's clear enough, that does not expire on or before their eighteenth license, passport, okay, that's clear enough, that does not expire on or before their eighteenth birthday and is enrolled as a, something, you know, and on and on and on. birthday and is enrolled as a, something, you know, and on and on and on. It's the double negative that is kind of, I keep tripping over the double negative in It's the double negative that is kind of, I keep tripping over the double negative in the sentence. the sentence. And I was wondering, ma'am, Speaker, will the author of the amendment help me to understand And I was wondering, ma'am, Speaker, will the author of the amendment help me to understand that section? that section?
The author of the bill you're asking, the sponsor of the bill? The author of the bill you're asking, the sponsor of the bill?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Speaker Terlachy, do you yield? Speaker Terlachy, do you yield?
I'll try, and I understand the double negative, even me, I read it over and over. I'll try, and I understand the double negative, even me, I read it over and over. But it's really, the intent is that if they have a license that goes beyond eighteen, a But it's really, the intent is that if they have a license that goes beyond eighteen, a driver's license or a passport that goes beyond eighteen, they don't need any assistance driver's license or a passport that goes beyond eighteen, they don't need any assistance by this bill. by this bill. They're set. They're set. But if their driver's license or passport will expire on or before their eighteenth But if their driver's license or passport will expire on or before their eighteenth birthday, then we want them to be able to get a license that will go beyond that with birthday, then we want them to be able to get a license that will go beyond that with the help of this bill. the help of this bill.
Does that satisfy your questions? Does that satisfy your questions?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. It does completely, I understand it now. It does completely, I understand it now. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. On the bill, Bill two four four dash thirty-seven as amended, Senator Perez, you are recognized. On the bill, Bill two four four dash thirty-seven as amended, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill, and it's really important that we support our youth I rise in support of this bill, and it's really important that we support our youth as they gain autonomy. as they gain autonomy. And I just want to share one very poignant testimony that was provided by one of our And I just want to share one very poignant testimony that was provided by one of our youth. youth. She says, "My support for this bill stems from my own personal experience of being kicked She says, "My support for this bill stems from my own personal experience of being kicked out shortly after graduating from high school here in Guahan. out shortly after graduating from high school here in Guahan. As a teenager with no resources to fall back, my ability to navigate this new independence As a teenager with no resources to fall back, my ability to navigate this new independence while transient was largely due to having my passport in my possession. while transient was largely due to having my passport in my possession. Having a valid government ID allowed me to obtain a copy of my birth certificate and Having a valid government ID allowed me to obtain a copy of my birth certificate and also replacement social security card that was required when I sought employment. also a replacement social security card that was required when I sought employment. Without my passport, I would have faced a catch twenty-two predicament wherein a government Without my passport, I would have faced a catch twenty-two predicament wherein a government ID is needed to apply for a placement social security card, yet a social security card ID is needed to apply for a placement social security card, yet a social security card is needed to apply for a new government ID. is needed to apply for a new government ID. The same predicament exists for birth certificates and proof of residency. The same predicament exists for birth certificates and proof of residency. Further, the more pressing issue of lacking safe permanent housing at the time would Further, the more pressing issue of lacking safe permanent housing at the time would have made residency verification impossible. have made residency verification impossible. Given these obstacles, I highly recommend broadening the eligibility criteria to juniors." Given these obstacles, I highly recommend broadening the eligibility criteria to juniors." So, you know, this really hit home for me, because we want to be able to assist and prevent, So, you know, this really hit home for me, because we want to be able to assist and prevent, assist these youth and prevent them from getting stuck in this catch twenty-two when assist these youth and prevent them from getting stuck in this catch twenty-two when they're, they have the initiative to gain their independence. they're, they have the initiative to gain their independence. And I think this bill is so important, and we're at a place in our community where many And I think this bill is so important, and we're at a place in our community where many of our youth are facing this problem. of our youth are facing this problem. We just learned about, there are about two thousand of our youth in CPS. We just learned about, there are about two thousand of our youth in CPS. And this is, you know, this is something where we really, really need to lend a helping And this is, you know, this is something where we really, really need to lend a helping hand for those that are most in need, and this bill recognizes that. hand for those that are most in need, and this bill recognizes that. And so I rise in support. And so I rise in support. Sidois Masi. Sidois Masi.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Thank you, Senator Perez. On the bill, Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized. On the bill, Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. A simple question, maybe the author can answer that, or the last speaker. A simple question, maybe the author can answer that, or the last speaker. What is the number of students we're anticipating? What is the number of students we're anticipating?
Speaker Terlachy, do you yield to the question? Speaker Terlachy, do you yield to the question?
That's a very good question. That's a very good question. I don't know the exact answer. I don't know the exact answer. The fiscal note was written on the original bill, which was for eight, sorry, seniors The fiscal note was written on the original bill, which was for eight, sorry, seniors only, not juniors. only, not juniors. So by including juniors, we might double their estimates. So by including juniors, we might double their estimates. And they're estimating in the GDOE system, graduation rate of ninety point seven percent, And they're estimating in the GDOE system, graduation rate of ninety point seven percent, which represents about one thousand seven hundred students. which represents about one thousand seven hundred students. That would be seniors. That would be seniors. So if we included juniors, perhaps double that amount. So if we included juniors, perhaps double that amount. That's in DOE. That's in DOE.
If the answer's about seventeen hundred students, correct? If the answer's about seventeen hundred students, correct?
Yes. Yes.
And that's times twenty-five dollars, correct? And that's times twenty-five dollars, correct? Are we well aware of that? Are we well aware of that?
Yes. Yes.
That's forty-two thousand. That's forty-two thousand. You know, what I'm curious about is that, as it was mentioned, that... You know, what I'm curious about is that, as it was mentioned, that...
Not twenty-five dollars, sorry, ten dollars. Not twenty-five dollars, sorry, ten dollars.
It's ten dollars for a Guam ID? It's ten dollars for a Guam ID?
Well, that's what BBMR says here. Well, that's what BBMR says here.
Okay, I just spoke to DRT, they told me it costs twenty-five dollars. Okay, I just spoke to DRT, they told me it costs twenty-five dollars.
Well, that's what I thought. Well, that's what I thought. I'm just reading the fiscal note, I don't know why they put ten dollars. I'm just reading the fiscal note, I don't know why they put ten dollars.
Okay, well, the only thing I'm concerned about is just the amount, because as I know Okay, well, the only thing I'm concerned about is just the amount, because as I know that it was mentioned, and I spoke to the RT, they couldn't give an amount, the impact. that it was mentioned, and I spoke to the RT, they couldn't give an amount, the impact. Simple math, doesn't require a lot of intelligence, number of students, seventeen hundred, twenty-five Simple math, doesn't require a lot of intelligence, number of students, seventeen hundred, twenty-five dollars, gives you forty-two thousand, not a lot of money. dollars, gives you forty-two thousand, not a lot of money. It's easier, I support the bill's intent. It's easier, I support the bill's intent. The only thing I'm concerned about is that the fiscal impact, I'm anticipating, because, The only thing I'm concerned about is that the fiscal impact, I'm anticipating, because, you know, we're going to be doing the budget very soon, we have to anticipate that Department you know, we're going to be doing the budget very soon, we have to anticipate that Department Revenue and Taxation, as they mentioned, they're willing to work out a time to be able to Revenue and Taxation, as they mentioned, they're willing to work out a time to be able to open their doors for the students on weekends. open their doors for the students on weekends. And I'm like, you want to do it on weekends? And I'm like, you want to do it on weekends? The number of folks that need to be there is not just one or two at revenue tax. The number of folks that need to be there is not just one or two at revenue tax. So like I said, I support this, but I'm just very curious about the financial impact, So like I said, I support this, but I'm just very curious about the financial impact, because once this bill passes and the governor signs it, the impact's going to be fast, fast because once this bill passes and the governor signs it, the impact's going to be fast, fast and fierce. and fierce. And I understand, it was mentioned by the author, about the folks that qualify for driver's And I understand, it was mentioned by the author, about the folks that qualify for driver's license. license. What is the expiration for the Guam ID card? What is the expiration for the Guam ID card? Do you have a date from the author? Do you have a date from the author? How many years? How many years? Because it talks about minors, when, you know, there's a lot of elders that don't drive Because it talks about minors, when, you know, there's a lot of elders that don't drive anymore, and they're having problems getting their Guam ID also. anymore, and they're having problems getting their Guam ID also. So I would ask that maybe we can consider amending the bill to add the elders. So I would ask that maybe we can consider amending the bill to add the elders. And the reason why I brought this up, because my mother, before she passed away, she doesn't And the reason why I brought this up, because my mother, before she passed away, she doesn't drive, had to take her up there, she was eighty years old, and she got a Guam ID card so she drive, had to take her up there, she was eighty years old, and she got a Guam ID card so she can go to the bank. can go to the bank. And that's the issue that a lot of the elders are facing today. And that's the issue that a lot of the elders are facing today. They're not going to walk up there with their passport, just like you mentioned earlier They're not going to walk up there with their passport, just like you mentioned earlier about the students, no difference for the elders. about the students, no difference for the elders. And if we're going to waive minors, we should also seriously consider the elders, the ones And if we're going to waive minors, we should also seriously consider the elders, the ones that don't drive or cannot drive. that don't drive or cannot drive. But if I could be at least informed about what is the expiration, the length of the But if I could be at least informed about what is the expiration, the length of the time of Guam ID? time of Guam ID? I'm just curious, is it three years, or is it five years? I'm just curious, is it three years, or is it five years? If the author knows the answer, is it seven years? If the author knows the answer, it would appreciate, is it seven years?
Speaker, do you yield to the question? Speaker, do you yield to the question?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that question, how long the real ID lasts. I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that question, how long the real ID lasts.
If we can take a quick recess, I can get on the phone and find out real quick. If we can take a quick recess, I can get on the phone and find out real quick.
A minute recess. A minute recess. We are back from recess. Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for that short recess. I was advised by Department Revenue and Taxation that for minors, it's five years. The ID card is good for five years. And for adults, it's good for eight years. Okay? So I think that's, that's pretty good. And in reference to the issue of the minors, that they get their driver's license, one of the beauty of this bill, you know, I support the bill. Okay, I just want to make it very clear, I support the bill. Is that if a minor gets a Guam ID, and it's a real ID, when he or she is going to get a driver's license, it's easy for them to get a Guam driver's license, real ID. And it will fulfill their requirements by, I think the federal statute now is mandatory to get a real ID. So I do rise in support. And when it comes to the financial impact, I'm truly not worried about it. Because we can make the adjustment, I know the author's going to say that, we can make the adjustment as we move. It's not like it's going to cost us a million dollars. It's all under $100,000. I just asked that maybe if she would allow me, I'll do the amendment to add the elders that don't have driver's licenses, that they don't have, and be able to be waived for them. And when I say elders, I'm referring to, I guess maybe, a quick recess? Okay. We'll take another recess in reference to that, if possible.
One minute recess.
who, after her confirmation hearing, was willing to talk to me about, you know, the high school students and the challenges they are facing and the benefits of getting them IDs early on. Also, those in the CPS system who also talked to us about the foster kids and the unfortunate reality, as one of my colleagues, Senator Perez, pointed out, we have a large number of children, over two thousand referrals to CPS. We have six hundred right now who are under CPS custody. And so that's even the number that BBMR used to calculate, you know, the amount we pay for them, six hundred kids in CPS custody. But this is really, we have kids who are in that CPS custody aging out to eighteen. And they are the same kids at seventeen and eighteen, except now they're no longer in CPS custody. So if CPS can get them these IDs, it's going to help them to continue with services that they might need beyond the age of eighteen and hopefully to, if they're able to get jobs and to lead productive lives. It's really a challenge for our youth these days, so all the help that we can give to those who are the most in need and the most at risk of this system, I like it because we are requiring parents to participate and get their children to the schools, you know, while they're still seventeen. We can require them to help in getting these processes done. After that, as we all know, it's very difficult to get access to everything you're going to need to get an ID. So the earlier they get it, the better. And Sisus Massey, tell my colleagues for their support in this, listening to the status hearings on the foster children and all of our efforts this month. Sisus Massey.
Thank you very much, Speaker. On the motion to place in the voting file, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
We're now on Bill number two forty-nine dash thirty-seven COR. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to place Bill two four nine dash thirty-seven, as amended by the committee, into the third reading file, and I wish to discuss.
Please proceed.
Bill two four nine dash thirty-seven proposes to authorize both the Guam Coastal Management Program of the Bureau Statistics and Plans and the Guam Environmental Protection Agency to hire classified environmental lawyers pursuant to Sections four one zero three G and H of Chapter four, Title four Guam Code annotated, using their federal funds. Those sections state, G one, "A person may be employed in the classified service contingent upon the availability of a grant, federal program, or federal funds. To an appointment in the classified service may be commensurate with the duration of a grant, federal grant, federal program, or federal funds, including renewals and extensions thereof." Four one zero three H states, "A person may be employed in a professional level in the classified service for a specific project or program. An appointment in the classified service may be commensurate with the duration of a specific project or program." So GuamIP and BSP Guam Coastal Management Program are predominantly federally funded entities. And in the case of GuamIP, they have been federally funded for over a decade. Bill two four nine dash thirty-seven aims to expand the use of federal funds to be used to hire classified environmental attorney, which are essential in providing guidance and further updating environmental regulations, many of which are decades old and in need of updating. The decrease of attorney capacity has affected the recent forward progress of updating regulations, such as the Recycling Revolving Fund, Safe Drinking Water Act, Underground Storage Tank, Non-Containment of Sulfur Dioxide, and now recently, the new regulation for PFAS that aims to protect our water, air, land, and the health of our people. Both GuamIP and Bureau Statistics and Plans are tasked with adhering to stringent, oftentimes complex laws and regulations that are designed to protect our resources and environment. In many aspects of the work that they are mandated to do, legal counsel specialized in environmental law is essential for ensuring compliance and enforcement in accordance with these laws, such as the Resource Conservation Recovery Act, Comprehensive Environmental Response Compensation Liability Act, also known as Super Fun, Safe Drinking Water Act, Clean Water Act, and the list goes on and on. And most recently, developing action levels for dildraine. BSP is tasked as a centralized planner of GOV Guam, including the management of our natural resources, to adhere to critical and nuanced environmental protection and management statutes. Legal counsel for GuamIP and coastal management must possess also an institutional understanding of the agency's governing policy and programs. With the rapid updating of the environmental policies throughout the country, they are responsible for making decisions that are vital to our way of life. Authorizing these agencies to hire in-house environmental legal counsel on a full-time basis serves the public interest because it provides a specialized knowledge of environmental regulations, strengthens our regulations, is cost-effective, and provides consistency in the agency's day-to-day operations. So just to make it clear, the federal government, by using their funds, did not intend that they... So the federal government did not intend that federal funds provided to these agencies be used for purposes unrelated to their missions. And over the past several years, officials, both local and federal, have made it clear that these agencies need full-time uninterrupted legal representation. It's important to note that the Attorney General will continue to prosecute violators of environmental laws, and the Office of the Attorney General will continue to represent these departments in litigation. It's also important to note that GuamIP does not have prosecutorial authority. And therefore, these lawyers will be used to guide them on interpretation of environmental laws, as well as update them. Bill two four nine dash thirty-seven is needed to strengthen the capacity of GuamIP and BSP to carry out their important work of managing and protecting our drinking water, our land, and ocean from pollution and contamination. We are fortunate to have these resources, a sole source aquifer, rivers, land, and ocean our people have depended upon for millennia, and that we must protect these for future generations. I humbly ask for my colleagues' support on this important measure. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Senator Perez. On the bill, is there anyone like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I attended the public hearing on this bill. I don't think much has transpired with regards to contents of this bill since then. I wanted to inquire because if the main sponsor would yield, she referenced that as long as it's federally funded, that these classified attorneys would remain at the agency. What happens if the funds are not available, or the feds continue funding these attorneys? Because I understand the need for regulations, but I don't know, is that a need year-round, every day? I mean, I was at GuamIP for almost four years, and we actually initiated the process of having an Assistant Attorney General agreement with our agency so that we could address the legal issues, including prosecution when needed, because we did have a number of cases that we had to address at the time as well. So I just want clarification, because we have this, you know, and I'm all for goodness. I was in for protecting the environment when it wasn't the cool thing to do. But I just want clarification, because what happens when the, if the funds were to run out and you have an employee who's already identified as a classified employee in the government of Guam? What happens then? And then really, is the agenda now, are we going to have attorneys in every government agency when we're already dealing with challenges of getting attorneys hired at the Attorney General's office? So I just want to get that clarified, because I just see a whole wave of creating positions throughout the government of Guam for attorneys. So if the main sponsor would yield to that question, because I just don't want to add more burden in areas maybe where funding is not there, what's next? What happens then?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, I do. And thank you for that question. And so with this bill, it does not preclude any type of local funding. So for instance, we get, there's a lot of special funds that GuamIP receives in addition to funds from use tax. And so there is, although, you know, historically, for the past decade or more, GuamIP has been subsisting off of federal funds, there is this opportunity to supplement, you know, perhaps this position through local funds. So that would help to, I guess, ensure consistency. So I hope that answers the question.
Well, I appreciate the answer, but I also want to note, Madam Speaker, you know, when I started working at GuamIP thirty years ago, the staffing pattern there is pretty much the same today. And while I understand the need that's been relayed by the main sponsor for an attorney, there's also many other critical needs of the agency, including their ability to have personnel to actually go out and properly regulate environmental violations. I mean, you and I walked the property down there with regards to the solar farm. We saw, you know, at least I did, GuamIP did not have and was not doing proper inspections on that large-scale project. Also, I mean, if we are going to address even the solid waste issue, who has the authority to address enforcement with regards to illegal dumping? That responsibility also rests with GuamIP. And we know they don't have the personnel and resources to go out there and address proper enforcement. The list goes on. I drive down Guam streets every day. You can see continued environmental violations where there is no enforcement. And GuamIP will come back and tell you, we have limited resources. We have limited personnel. So, you know, as we look at priorities in terms of how can we get more, you know, actual benefit for our community with regards to environmental enforcement and protection is having more additional resources, additional personnel that are the eyes and ears of our people out there and actually out there doing inspections and actually out there doing enforcement. Because I've unfortunately seen over the years that the agency, you know, it used to have some sharp teeth, and we've had some bigger challenges. Imagine taking on the attorneys at Menengen when we had that whole issue up there, you know, taking on construction of large condos where there's no water resources available or sewer resources for the existing populations, like up in Mangilo, where we had GCC and we had the University of Guam. And we had residents on the second floor that had no water pressure. Those are the areas where our community, Madam Speaker, are so directly and adversely impacted. And I, you know, I can understand the need for an attorney, but do I see that attorney day in, day out, day after day after day, just dealing with regulations of the agency? I don't think things have changed that much. I think that attorney is going to have little idle time in between. And yet, the needs of the agency to me are the hands and the legs that are, and the eyes and the ears that are actually out there in the community enforcing environmental laws, because you hear frustrations from our people, including all the illegal dumping, that even if we pass the universal trash legislation, will not end it. It's sad, but you know, some people, their human behavior and their, you know, their sense of respect for the community is very different. I mean, the trash can could be two feet from them. Some people will never make the effort to walk to that trash can two feet from them to properly dispose of their trash, even if it is free. So I just think when we look at our priorities here and we look at the funding, because the funding, you know, no matter what our needs are, there's never going to be enough to fulfill everything we need and everything we want. But, you know, how do we prioritize that? And how do we maximize the benefit to the community so that we really do have true environmental protection? Because I'll tell you, there's not a lot going out there in the Ha'lam Thano. We talk about protecting our waterlands, a lot of adverse, gosh, look at that fire we just had a few days ago. I mean, I just don't want to marvel at all the smoke and go, wow, that's a big fire. But that problem, Madam Speaker, was asking for it. It was waiting for it. I remember bringing that up to the head of GuamIP at a previous hearing, that particular location with all of those hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of junk cars. And I asked, you know, is that site sanitized? Has that been addressed with each of those vehicles? I don't know. What are the odds? Let's guess. What do we think? Probably not. And that's right in Harmon. You see it every time you go up and down the ramp there to the airport. Now, when you see things that big and that large, and I don't know, maybe, maybe, excuse me, sorry, God bless you. Maybe they might have, you know, violation notices against that particular company. I don't know. I'm sure next time we have a round, that's going to be a question I'm going to ask. But when you see violations that are so flagrant, that are problems just waiting to burst into flames, and you don't see enforcement, and you know, like I said, I like to see those violation notices, where are our people left? Not just with the hazard of that fire the other day, the impact that it had to the surrounding community and businesses, because we know in Harmon, there's a mix of residential, mixed in with commercial, mixed in with industrial. Certainly, the impact that day to the drivers. But now, look at it, it's a charred remain of what? Probably contaminated soil. I can't imagine. Do you think the company that put that mess there has the financial wherewithal to address the proper disposal and cleanup of that site, especially what potential contaminants could be in the soil now as a result of that fire? I'm just saying, it's a question of what the priorities are. And while I understand where the sponsor's coming with the bill, there's a lot more need for resources at GuamIP. In thirty years, with all the growth and development that we've seen here, we've not seen that particular agency with their vast authorities and regulations grow. And that's where we need tangible, hands-on-the-ground. That's where I would like to see more of our colleagues advocating. Let's see if the budget, with all this excess revenue that we have, if that translates into additional resources and personnel for the agency, because it's very obvious, you don't need to go far to look around the island to see where the lack of enforcement is occurring, or educational outreach and awareness, even more importantly, so we can avoid these problems from happening in the first place. That, to me, is what I see as more a priority. But, you know, if the argument's going to be, we're going to put forth an attorney there, and they're going to do the regulations, but this attorney doesn't, you know, really going to do the prosecution, we're still going to leave that with the Office of the Attorney General? They're going to look at regulations? Are we updating regulations every day and every month of the week? I highly doubt it. So on my list of priorities, you know, this is not at the top of the list. So I'm just relaying that concern, because I think it's a very legitimate concern. I think it's a concern a lot of our people see out there. And when we see these type of violations, like I said, happening in our community, as I relayed earlier, like that fire we had in Harmon just a few days ago, how could that be missed? And if there are violation notice, what happened with them? Because that's a very good question. Certainly, I will have to ask. Did GuamIP do a proper enforcement to minimize and prevent that, what inevitably was going to be a major problem, from happening? I mean, we're not talking five, ten, fifteen cars. I stopped counting. I couldn't count that much. It's too high for me. So I just think colleagues be mindful as we move forward with all this, as if this is somehow going to be the major cure-all for the challenges our community is facing out there. I think we all love the environment. It's a lot more acceptable these days to say that without being accused of being a tree hugger. But we definitely need to put the resources and the money where it's needed the most. And I think it's needed more in personnel and resources that are actually out there addressing proper enforcement. Of what the agency has, it's a very powerful agency. It has a lot of authority, but it's not used. It's not used effectively. We can talk about clean water all we want. We can talk about keeping the island clean all we want. We can talk about how we don't want to see illegal dumping all we want. But unless there's effective enforcement and personnel out there to execute that, we get what we get. And I don't think our people are happy with what they're getting now with regards to environmental protection on Guam. So colleagues, keep that in mind. How can an agency that has such a critical mission not grow in thirty-plus years? And it has not grown in thirty-plus years. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. On the bill, Senator Taiti, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just wanted to clarify something. If the author should yield to the question, and may I ask a question, Madam Speaker, okay? Will the attorney that they hire be placed at a limited term or be classified? It will be classified, okay.
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
I yield. And it specifically states classified.
Okay. Another question to the author, is there any issues on, instead of classifying this attorney to have... to have the attorney just based on the consensus of the agency, whether to bring the attorney on as a limited term or a classified? You know, we're talking about federal funds. And as long as the federal funds are there, you know, which EPA basically lives on federal funds, that there's no issue in keeping that attorney there. But what's the difference if we have that attorney as a limited attorney rather than a classified? So if there's any issues with bringing on the attorney as a limited, is my question. Would there be any issues?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes. Thank you for that question. Yes, thank you for that question.